Okay, it's 6:04. We'll call the meeting to order. Clerk, may I have a roll call and an establishment of a quorum? Isaiah Crowe, Mary Beth Schall here, Barb Stotts here, Mike Whitner here, Matt Crowe, Dylan Hellenstein here, and I'm here as well. All right, I have proof of posting. Please drop me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, do I have a motion to proceed again?
So, second.
Any questions, discussion on that? Mary Beth, yes, Mike, Dylan, Angie, yes, I vote yes. Do you want to leave there any public input? It's nice, so you want to grab it also is. Sorry, drew the short section of the papers. Great, moving on to minutes and payroll. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of September 22nd, 2025?
So, second.
Any questions, comments? Mary Beth, yes, Mike, Dylan, Angie, yes, I vote yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the payroll rules and disbursements October 2025?
So, second.
Any questions on the attached bills?
The Chromebooks there is we, those were what we were talking about earlier. Just we're rehopping every single year.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? Okay, Mary Beth, yes, Mike, Dylan, Angie, yes, and I vote yes. Moving on to reports, I'll just say we're munching our way through some goodies. Because we had some treats here given by the students and the admin and thanks to the school board and appreciation for our week, I should say, and lovely cards and some pictures drawn by students. So that's much appreciated and just a thanks to everybody. And the bat will keep it rolling because we've got to have the internet tonight. So I'll open it up whoever wants to go first.
I'll go first.
Okay.
Only because I want to really emphasize the work of the board. So last week was School Board Appreciation Week and we so very much appreciate the work of the board there. They have been so supportive of not only our students and our admin, our community. We've done some really incredible things thanks to your support over the past year and we couldn't, we couldn't do it without you. So this is just a small token and yes, like Barb said, we had a bunch of our elementary school classrooms make cards for the board members. Andy, our youth apprentice, she made a sign and then brought that out at lunch for the middle and high school students to sign. So you'll see their signatures too. So it's really, it's all of us coming together just to thank you for your hard work. So thank you so much.
And I'll say it's the work of what all you do that make our lives easier and this is enjoyable because of the team effort that everybody's had. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay.
So I'll just go over a-
No, thank you.
I'll go over a couple of things because I know some of the things we'll actually get to more in depth when we talk about the strategic framework tonight. But some of the priorities that we've been working on is transportation. We are still trying, you've seen my, probably my social media posts, but if you have even an inkling that you want to be a bus driver, see me as soon as possible. Part of the conversation is just that we have three buses that are sitting there. We just don't have drivers to get in them and, you know, help us out with some of those routes. And that's whether it's with athletics or just on a normal school route. So we are looking at some different things right now. One of our routes, the gray route, is actually we're combining K-12. They're coming on one bus just to see if that will help alleviate some of it because we had so many kids missing classroom time and it's just unacceptable to miss out. Especially if you're a high school student, you're missing your physics class every day in the first 15 minutes. It's just what we strive for. So working on that. A really exciting thing is our student advisory committee at the high school. They're going to be presenting in November, but they have also, they have a lot of excitement over having a school board rep. So we are starting in December, going to be having a student that will join us at board meetings to give input and insight to the board. We'll talk more about how that will shake out once we get closer, but I know that was something that you really wanted, is some voice on the school boards. Excited for that. Couple other things, I'm excited to have our strategic planning task force here tonight. They have done so much work and we're here to celebrate some of the things that we're working on. And then last thing I want to talk about is safety. We had Dane County come through, so our Dane County Sheriff's Department will come through randomly and do safety checks. So they were here the other day and are working with our staff to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to be compliant. But Barb and I also have a meeting with them as well coming up. We're just looking at some of the response times and things that have been utilized with our district that are, we don't feel are where they need to be. So we're meeting with them coming up on the 28th. So those are a couple of my insights. I'll give more week over the goals. So with that, I'll invite the next person down and we're going to come right here. So we're right up in front. Angie, where are you? Oh, Angie, do you want to get your social media? Sure, why don't you give us a report on the social media website, anything that-
So, social media right now, I looked at it yesterday. I think we're almost to 1,000 on Instagram right now. I figured we weren't quite there last weekend. That was a little- I don't know if there was 100 for me because I was probably coming at the end of the month. But we have, there was one video on Facebook of Mr. Marx. Says a slash, I think that has 6,000 views right now.
People comment.
But it's too good and I think just working on little updates on the website. I was helping Mr. Green. I got some stuff fixed for him today, so.
Awesome. And you delivered all of our secure posters so we get safety coordinator. Fantastic. Well, thanks Angie so much. All right, let's have Kelly.
I would say a huge highlight has been the all hands on deck approach where we have not been fully staffed and trying to fill in for all of our kids with high needs. Because that's an incredible challenge when you don't know the kids in their places. So we're very grateful to anybody who's been subbing and then all the additional coverage that some of our other staff members, student services, special education, everybody's been doing. And glad to see that they're filling out some of those forms to use knowledge for that extra effort in terms of the new handbook. And then the main special education highlight that I had was the indicator fee information because after those results come out, you can have kind of a one-on-one meeting where they provide you with additional resources and strategies and ideas for continuing to engage your family and the community. So we were able to kind of highlight some of that at our department meeting and came away with several different suggestions for how we can continue to strengthen those relationships, which was wonderful. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, huge shout out to Go Right Way. So they came in and helped bring a bus so we were actually able to get on the bus, sit on the bus, and we talked about bus safety and bus rules. And now if there's issues on the bus, it's easy to go back to that. You're like, remember when? Okay, yeah. Another huge success was on Friday, we had Black Earth and Maisel Fire Department here and children in 4K through second grade got to go and do a nice fire safety presentation and prevention with them. And I may have been convinced to put on all of the fire gear. And the kids loved that. So it was fun. I really enjoyed getting to partner with different outside organizations, so. Any questions or anything else on your report?
I had a story. It was a celebration. Last year I was working with somebody who was subbing around the area with different school districts as a spec aid and just a teacher aid in general. And she was having a tougher time getting some consistent schedules. So I recommended she should come over to Wisconsin Heights and sub here because she would have a lot of value from our school. And she reached out to me on Messenger a week ago saying how grateful she was for that recommendation she's been subbing this year and is having the time of her life. She is so appreciative of how wonderful it is to be with the students. The teachers, you know, Sarah, subbing here. So thank you for all your work and everybody at the elementary for making it a great place to sub.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right, guys.
Liz.
All right, so we got a couple of things, a couple of great celebrations. First of all, we thank you again for being willing to really let our students do field trips. Some of the stuff that they've gotten a chance before to do. And then today they had another field trip where I haven't gotten a chance to get all the information back from students and stuff yet, but up another great one today. So the field trips have really done well. Last week when they went to the education fair in Sun Curry, when you have 40 kids come back excited about whether they want to go and go to a two-year school, a four-year school, or go into the trades and to hear conversations of students, it was really neat to hear in the hallways and things. So thank you because we couldn't do that without your willingness to do this for us. So that was a huge celebration of that as well. The other celebration is our students are getting to class on time. They do appreciate the tardiness.
I appreciate the infinite campus.
Oh, vacation. Yes, those are also very good. So it has been really something that has been, you know, at first day there, again, you know, it's a change, right? But it was a change that I think has been really well received now that they're understanding the why behind it. They're seeing the why and I think that's really important. And that's because our teachers are putting value on the first five minutes into the class of how much information they share right away. So you don't want to miss that. So that's really, really important to us. So I'm excited about those things. So I've met, we are still going to continue to work on, you know, again, filling in spots for subs, things like that, making sure that we have everything we can for our kids and giving them valuable time in the classroom with their academics.
Any questions? All right.
Awesome. Thank you. No problem. And we did include kind of, we have that pertinent guide, information guide. I included it on our piece, but I didn't include it when it goes to the public just because we have numbers and stuff like that on it. So just so you know that. All right, awesome. Thanks.
Hello, everybody. So our athletics and activities are all doing really well. We recently had our first grade check of the school year, kind of that mid-quarter grade check. We had a large amount of students on there. However, the way that we structured the grading structure as far as eligibility works is that with this mid-quarter grade check is that as soon as their grades become passing, they regain their eligibility that day and then they're good for the rest of the quarter. So it's really just a way for us to check on our kids that are struggling early on in the quarter and keep eyes on them. Since my report came out, we've already had quite a few kids come off that list when they've already got their grades up and they were communicated by me, the student themselves, their parents, as well as their coaches and advisors. And when you get all of those hands and eyes on those kids, it's amazing how quickly those grades start to build up, so.
How many student athletes do we have in the middle school right now?
Well, so we've got roughly 30 on the middle school volleyball team and then another 11 on middle school cross country.
So then 40 were ineligible.
No, so that's totally those black athletes.
That's not athletes.
Yeah, as far as our athletes that were on the list, I think there was six.
I was going to say, I'm like, that's a high one.
No, I think as far as middle school athletes, no, there was like six or so. That's always like the pros of like being involved with stuff is that usually those kids perform really well academically. We are bringing our winter coaches for approval, all of them except for high school basketball for boys because we've been busy doing those interviews last week as well as tonight. We finished up with our last interview. So glad the names ready for the next school board meeting for both the varsity and the JD positions that are both open and posted.
With the timing of that, do you think there's any need to move that along?
It's a possibility if you guys want to run a quote-unquote emergency meeting to have them approved, but also I think we're probably okay. I'll kind of leave that in your hands. If you want to speed it up, you can, but you don't have to.
I mean, what's, what's, it starts soon.
It does.
You seem very comfortable. What is the first date?
Uh, it's in November.
Early?
Early November.
I think I would prefer to get a best. Especially just communication wise, getting to know the kids if you can speed.
Sure.
You'd not think that one, right? Or speed with termination.
Yep.
We'll just need a quorum and usually you can do something soon.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, so we could continue to have conversations with local business owners, making sure that the relationship between themselves and our school district is in a positive direction and if it's not, you know, what kind of things can we do to turn that around? So those conversations are going really well. Our fall sports are doing well. Football season just had their last game this past Friday. They struggled this year just with low participation numbers and stuff like that. But the boys soccer team is doing really, really well. They just got their playoff seeding, so they got the number two seed in their sectional. Number one was Ripken. So, but really, really well positioned within our sectional. We'll have a first round bye. We play the winner of like, I think it's the 15 and the 18 seed.
Home game too, probably?
Yeah, home game. Yeah, so that will be next week, Thursday, the 23rd. Will be our home regional game, that second round of regionals. And then regional finals will be slotted for Saturday, the 23rd. So if we win on Thursday, we host again on Saturday. Volleyball's been doing really well and so is cross country. And then we launched our winter athletic registration for all of our winter sports. Has it gone smooth? Yes. Great, yep, yep. Much smoother than the fall did. You know, we rolled it out and then we had to learn where a lot of our shortcomings were and where we made some mistakes in the process and regarding that whole new system and stuff like that.
With the grade checks, you said once they are passing, they can play again. Is that the same case at quarter level in semester or is that different?
At quarter and semester, there's different rules.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to make sure they were different. There's not the mid-quarter, the mid-
Correct, yep, yep. Those end of quarter and end of semester ones are a little bit more punitive as punishments.
So kind of asking Michelle, since she was here last year, is there a different strategy that everybody's going after this year or is it?
Well, I think having that quarter check allows us, that mid-quarter check is to really check in with the kids to be like, this is real. Like you need to have your grades, so it's not all of a sudden you get to quarter and then they're out.
Yeah.
Right? So it allows us to have some talks with them and like Alex said, gets everybody on the same page, parents everyone to say, all right, let's make sure that we're prioritizing that. I'm hopeful that this strategy is going to be a lot more effective than what we did last year.
Yeah. We got rid of the grading green sheets that were last year and stuff like that. That seemed like just an extra unnecessary step and seemed to be a little bit of a conflicting point last year and stuff. So when their grades do become passing, the student or the parent can reach out to me directly and say, hey, our grades are passing, can you check them? And I check them and I let them know that they're eligible and I let the coaches and advisors know that they're eligible. It just, it goes a lot faster.
I appreciate you doing that extra step and putting that back.
Any other questions? Thanks, Alex. Ooh. Hi, Nick.
How's it going, guys? So yeah, I'm just going to kind of talk about a couple of things here that we've been working on, what we've completed, just kind of where we're at with our process right now. So recently we've gone through the process of completing the annual reports. I've been working with the auditor and kind of wrapping things up and working with him to make sure we're getting that taken care of. We completed the aid certification process and obviously a big part we've been doing the last couple of weeks is in working on the budgets and trying to get that to a place where we feel comfortable for the upcoming school year. So we've been working on that quite a bit. And then the special ed annual report is something we've been working on. So that is something we, that opened up a couple of days ago that we're working on that will help determine how much aid we actually receive. Once all the schools have submitted those, we'll find that out. To kind of wrap up, I know we talked about this earlier a little bit, but we finished around $500,000 to wrap up last year's fiscal year in deposit, which is awesome. So yeah, we're just kind of trying to work on a way to kind of monitor the budget this year very closely and just kind of see where we're at as we go. So those are some things we're working on and then that's just kind of where I right now with what we've been doing, so.
I just want to say the visual aids and the financial summary graphs and everything are super helpful. So thanks for putting that stuff in there.
Yeah, we have lots of like, I like to see simple, help with that resource. It's really nice to visualize kind of where we were last year and kind of where we are now. And it's right on track where you want to be right now, which is great to see, so.
Even the annual trends, cash position and everything on a high deck is really nice.
Yep, it's kind of nice in that, so. And we'll work on budgeting tools that helps side that, that should help as well, so.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Nick. Hi, Dale.
Hi, everyone. Well, I'll start my report. I apologize to our AP score, Isaiah, I mentioned last week, hey, Alexia, we had these numbers this summer, just should have brought them from you.
Great.
We celebrated. See the numbers there? Obviously participation popped in, our scores are graded actually. All registered seniors got to do better on the test.
Wow.
So those were freshmen, sophomores, taking the AP.
Should have invited them for some treats.
Continue to get better, yeah, very impressive with those numbers.
Yeah, we take a warm.
Yeah. So pretty cool. And I hope you guys love, save the date, Angie, get your calendar out.
And I was actually going to ask you, I was thinking about that. When Liz was talking about the career fair and I was like, wait a minute. I'm like, what is the career fair? Did I miss it?
Andy helped me two weeks ago. We have a saving meeting. I had to get out, I just got to get it kicked out to the village, so, February 12th.
My calendar.
So I'm excited to have that back. Just wanted to mention too, under Vanguard Family, just for the boards where I serve on a couple of committees in the village. And, you know, I serve as a community member, but I always have my school hat on too and so things come up, so I just wanted to make you aware of those different committees. Mary Beth smiled and she, we served many years on the 2020 committee together. But I stay active in this community as well. And so when school topics come up, I think I do okay, handle it properly. Bring it back when we can be helpful, pass it along. So, and I'll finish with just sharing that we received a grant, a grant with Dependable Solutions, Joe Ed Dependable Solutions, really $80,000, $81,000 grant. That runs through August of 2027 and that's just to help our infrastructure, cybersecurity. Some of the grants can help us pay for consulting with Joe as well. So really excited about that. Pretty cool. Joe anticipates that may even get extended and so there'll be future opportunities to that as well. So what to be the noments available for Joe, so that's pretty cool.
Do you have to have everything already planned out as to where it comes to be allocated?
Yes, we have a whole board system, yeah. Now with Joe today, he was here with our district tech, we talked about just giving up funding and things, timeline and making sure that we get things on time.
Thanks, Dale. Any questions?
I just, will we just highlight the AP again? So in four years, we've doubled how many students are taking AP courses. Now all of the upperclassmen are getting essentially college credit.
Correct.
From those classes.
Say it again.
Are you seeing an increase in the number of upperclassmen taking it or is it just also underclassmen starting?
It's under, it's really been melted up with our panic at history classes. It really melted up our freshman sophomore school, so we're taking AP courses and that really expanded our numbers. But we have multiple juniors and seniors taking those AP classes. So some of our kids will take three APs in the spring.
Are those guaranteed credits through college if they pass or do they have to take like another test through the college just to confirm that they know everything?
I don't know all the details. My interpretation is yes, it's automatic, but some of the colleges will also take place in tests, so.
It kind of depends on, it depends on the school. Yep, it really depends on the school.
We sat down a lot of students who use Transferology and then also use that for the, for how they scored on their AP exam. So a lot of the seniors have already done that, whether it was Aaron or myself, to see if their school that they have chosen will accept this. And some like if they've gotten a four or five, it will count in that exact area of whatever the course was. And if they've got a three or four, it just depends on the school, they'll get it as an elective credit, but still it's an elective college credit that they do not have to take. So it's been, it really honestly is really a fun conversation to have for, you know, all that work that they put in. Like I know this year we have two students that are not taking a course per se in our building, but they're going to have to take an AP test in that area, which you can also do as well. Studying on their own, doing their own work.
We talked about this a little bit in our poster, US News report. Part of the reason that we finally got to that point was because we're expanding AP classes for our underclassmen and so those numbers should be helped how they, how they make those schools. That really helped us.
Well, I think we talked so much about the like the career fair and all these other, you know, career opportunities that we're pushing and the field trips. It's amazing to see the college avenue getting stronger at the same time that we're seeing the career avenue getting stronger here. I think a lot of people say, oh, it's a trade-off, but not at Wisconsin Heights apparently, so.
A lot of kids that aren't necessarily going to a four-year school, they're taking AP course because they're interested in learning, which that's for us as a peers, it's a dream.
We have two that scored, one that scored a five, one that scored a four and they have, they are, they're not, they have already decided they're not going to a four-year school. They're going into the trades and they're super talented already. But the reason they took it was they wanted to learn how to do the processing within their, within the thinking. And they thought that that really taught them how to do it. Pretty cool.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, everyone. We'll move on to our district business. 5.1, our Budget and Finance Committee met. Angie is chair. Do you want to have a brief overview? Do you want me to just say something?
You can do this one, Barb.
All right. We're lucky enough to have Brent and Nick for a while just kind of going through a brief overview of where the budget stood for last year and where we ended and then going into this year and especially into our annual meeting just to make sure everybody's on the same page of expectations so we can make it as riveting and engaging as possible for our audience at our next annual meeting, which is next meeting, that one comes, but it's going to be great. So thanks. Thanks to you two again for that dialogue and a lot of things on the horizon. I mean, it's a, an area that there's always something to talk about. So we have plans for our next committee meeting as well and things to look at as we budget and look to our next referendum. Probably not, not that far away. I know. So we'll move on unless there's something else you know. Next item of district business is our strategic planning update. We are going to hear from several members of the admin team.
Absolutely. Well, we are so excited to be here and give a, just a little synopsis of what has happened thus far and kind of the journey ahead. So as I mentioned before, we have members of our strategic planning task force here, which we-
Thanks, guys.
We had an incredible group of community members take on the task last year gathering voices and insight and input from our community.
We had an incredible group of community members take on the task last year of gathering voices and insight and input from our community, taking that and putting together five pillars that our district would then focus on for the upcoming, um, several years. And so a little bit before I go into the district scorecard, so if you just look at those five pillars, and if you didn't, I know the board has, um, information that they're just pulling up other computers, but I also made copies as well, if anyone wants a copy of these. Barb's gonna come around with those. But if you see those, the, just the strategic framework in and itself is everywhere, hopefully. You can feel it and see it throughout the district. We have, like, in all of our spaces, we have, you can see it's in here hanging up our framework. If you, any of our newsletters, our board reports, everything that we do, we, we focus it around those pillars. So whether it's academic performance beyond the bell, our Vanguard team, our Vanguard, um, family, or operational, you'll see that in everything we do. So a little bit what precipitated since we had our May 20th meeting and that framework was unveiled. So this summer, our admin team worked together, um, to come up with some of our, so if you have the district scorecard, that's the first thing. So our team got together this summer and worked with Brad and Steve, who helped with that strategic, the framework piece. So we met with them this summer and started really pulling apart some of our data and some of those, the strategic framework pillars and putting some goals under that. Then that team, our admin team, brought it to their building level, um, shared leadership teams, and then they had a chance to start looking at that. And from the district scorecard, then went down and put together building level strategies and goals. And then at the beginning of the school year, they met then with their staff and started continuing that work. We are just in the, the starting phase, so as you look through some of these scorecards, and I'm gonna have our building level principals report out on some of their specific things, but know that we're, we're still in the planning phase. So there's no hard and fast solutions for anything, but this is the, the initial work. So I wanted to go through some of these, um, and give just a high level of where we're at. In, just know that in February, that is when our, um, our admin team, along with members of our shared leadership team, so our, our, um, teachers will be here to present what, what's the work they're actually doing within this, their scorecards. So this is, like I said, more of an overview, and then you'll have a more meaty conversation in February. So if you look at the district scorecard, so let's start with educational excellence. The first three vital measures, I'm, I'm, not that I'm not, you're not gonna get information, some of the building level principals are gonna go into depth on those. So ultimately, when they come up here and share what their scorecards are. But you can see that in, with the first one, looking at the I-ready literacy benchmarks and that having that increase from three to five percent from fall to spring, um, in third grade. And then the vital measure number two, for our eighth graders, looking at seventy percent proficiency on the pre-ACT from fall to spring. And then vital measures three, for our eleventh graders, a seventy, seventy percent of them will meet or exceed the ACT composite proficiency, proficiency benchmark. And they'll talk more about that when they're up here in particular. And then the vital measure number four is around increasing access to high-quality instruction with our students with disabilities to improve educational excellence and emotional well-being. Um, and then if you turn that over, another one around emotional well-being. And then, like I said, our building level principals, we'll talk more about what they're gonna do at their buildings. But looking at second step for, um, four K through five, and then looking at our academic lives at the middle high school. And then vital measure number six is around our best and best screenings that we have around, um, SEL. And so those will be, like I said, they'll talk more about those in depth, about what they're gonna be doing. But ultimately, looking at those scores, doing an assessment this fall that they're gonna do next week, right, Kelly? Or coming up in a couple of weeks, those screenings will happen. So, and I know we haven't typically, at least last year was our first year, we didn't do a lot with that information. So though, all of these, when we look at some of these test measures that I'm talking about, we'll, as an admin team, we'll share out that information in November as we get it, just to say, hey, here's where we're at. But then when we come back in February is when we'd say, here's what we're doing about it in our buildings. And then the last two under this, under, um, under this pillar would be the career and life readiness. Um, just putting those strategies together, and that's something that Dale and his team are leading those efforts. And then once again, putting the job in career fair, making sure that that counts. So this, this pillar in particular is what we focused on the most. And one of the things that Brad and Steve really talked with our group about is there's a lot, right? Like, even under each pillar, you could have probably seven different strategies, but it's not, it's probably not gonna be effective if you have that many things that you're working on specifically at the district level, like. So when you get down to the other pillars, you can see we've only put a couple of things in those pillars. So as we work into this first year, we're figuring out what is, what's gonna make sense for our team to start out with, and then move on from there. So if you look at pillar two, beyond the bell, there's just a couple of things under that. So the three things that we decide as a team to focus on is really looking at that connection piece. So once again, we'll do the, um, we do a survey, we did one last spring, where we gauge some of the concepts around connection and belonging with our students. And so we'll do that same, um, we're actually doing it the week of October 27th, the same survey. So we'll get some data from our elementary, middle, high school students. And then at the, in the spring, we'll do it again, and then we'll be able to hopefully see that growth, um, for them. And then also looking at just the, the finance piece around our athletics and co-curriculars. That's been kind of a mystery for all of us, and so we're working with Brent and Nick on putting together, just really analyzing that right now, and then they're coming to the board in December and having to, at one of the, um, committee meeting, and really giving that to all of us so we can learn more about just what is that mystery, well, how is it set up right now? And are there changes that we want to make from there based on what we learned? And then the last thing is really looking at, some of you may remember with, with the new building project, we had to take down some of our trophies and rethink some of these spaces. So really looking at that plan and how do we incorporate some of that? Um, and working with our student, uh, student advisory committee at the high school so we can take some input from our alumni as well as what students want now, and then make that a space, an environment that celebrates our history, but also promotes hopefully winning more gold walls and such.
Of course.
For our folks. Can I make a suggestion on that one? Um, I think just at the mere mention of our off-campus opportunities that Liz was talking about, and I can recall, you know, an administration that wasn't as supportive of that idea. And so I certainly think it's something to celebrate, but also to maintain some innovation and outside-the-box thinking of, of what we're offering. Um, and just to kind of maintain its priority is to say, like, we as a school board want that and, and fiscally are, are willing to make sure that those opportunities exist for the kids, even with staff turnover, curriculum changes, that we're just maintaining that that is a priority that these kids have outside experience, outside the classroom, off-campus. Um, you know, outside the state, international travel can be life-changing for some of our kids. So I just think that's an area we're doing awesome on, and I would like to celebrate it. But I think also just to maintain some existence as, like, priority and to keep you guys thinking outside the box and how that can be expanded or, you know, what you need from us in terms of, of our support too. That's just my thoughts. So you, you don't, don't need to do that, but.
Yes, just.
Oh, no, that's great. And now, I'll be honest, like, as we sat down with the, our admin chief, like, we could have put seven under each of these pillars. And we're like, okay, we need to slow roll. You know, there's so many things that we want to do, but I think that makes perfect sense. Absolutely.
It probably was on your list.
I, I'll just. Um, okay, pillar three, Vanguard Family. So with that, um, so one of the things that was really quite apparent in our, in those community sessions is just that the communication that we have with not only external stakeholders like community members and such, but also internal stakeholders, our communication with our staff and our students. So one of the things, that's a priority. And so one of the things that we're doing, and I, I don't know if it was in this part that the board had put together, I gave you a proposal that I received, um, from getting a communications audit. So having an outside organization come into our, um, come into our district and really look at the ways we are already communicating, um, and then letting us know, like, how can we do that better? How can we do it differently so we can definitely reach that goal? So in here, you'll see that right now, working with that group, and then eventually analyzing that, what we learn, and then making a communications plan for the next three years based on what we learn. And that'll, that will go, whether it's email communication, it's website, it's even how we conduct ourselves, how we brand ourselves with our, like, physical communication, so.
I don't disagree with creating an outside consultant, but could you just explain why you think it's valuable to have them come in?
Yeah, absolutely. So I talked with several superintendents that were in the same situation as we, as we are, and I think a lot of us have been in. And it just makes sense to work with someone that has worked with other districts, so they have, they have, you know, best practice. They, they know what's, what's been effective in other districts. I mean, I, a lot of us could say, hey, this is what's wrong, here's what needs to be changed. But I think someone that, from the outside, that's worked with other districts and seen what's effective, can give us the best input moving forward, so.
And there is some opportunity maybe for some individual PD or individual area delegation, or how we can incorporate team efforts.
Absolutely. And you know, you look at, like, some districts, for, a lot of big districts, they have a full-time communications director, someone that's just doing all their communications. And all of us are the communications directors, and we all have a little piece of that hat. So it's nice to have someone that can come in and really focus on that for us too, so. Uh, let's.
And you're gonna be giving out separately to the board later on some information on that. Remember we talked about.
I've.
It was in the report.
Okay, thank you. See, okay. I know. Yeah, just to give you a little more.
Yep.
Uh, the next one is, next pillar is Vanguard Team. And so that's our own teams, uh, staff and such. So one of the things is onboarding. So we have a couple of different onboarding processes. There's one, there's a onboarding process, process where it's like getting your email, getting your, uh, you know, fab reader, fab reader to get in here, all the things before you even get here. And then Dale takes the, like, three days, two or three days where folks come in. And then there's, like, the mentor program that we have. So there's our onboarding, we have a pretty extensive onboarding practice, but there are some pieces that are not going so, so, um, they're not as effective. And one of them could have been a reason that we just had the wrong person in the position as HR this summer. So we got some feedback that things have weren't done as timely as they, they could have been. Uh, so those are some things that we want to make sure that we, um, that we clean up because we want people, as soon as they come in here, to be like this, like the person that you talked to the other day. That this is a great place to work, people are wonderful, they're organized, timely. And so we're, we're not having anyone from the outside come in. We're just, I'm gonna work with some folks and just kind of look at our onboarding process, just do an audit of it, see what we might change, just interview some of our new hires and such, and find out what can we do differently to make that better. So that's one piece. Um, another thing is just maintaining a positive staff experience. So we're working on culture right now, seeing what we can do that folks feel that they're listened to, they're heard, supported, but also celebrated. So as an admin team, that's one of our priorities. Some of these things will continue to work themselves out with what the strategy will be, but right now, just know that that's a focus for us as well. And then we're also looking at, um, our co-curriculars, our advisors and coaches' compensation. And even though last year we've made them more equitable across the board, they're certainly not where they need to be in comparison to other districts. So right now, I'm working with Brent and Nick on just analyzing what other folks, what models they're under, seeing where we're at, and then we'll have a proposal for the board as to what we think those changes should be to make that, um, to make them, so they know that they're valued as well. And then lastly, operational excellence, the last pillar, is looking at, um, uh, putting together a five-year maintenance, um, the Fund 46 plan. So right now, we're in the press, that was one of the reasons, one of the things we talked about in our, our finance meeting right before this, was where we're at with some of those dollars and what needs, putting together a plan as to what we should spend those dollars on or allocate those for. And some of that came out of the Vanguard voice, it's what folks were really excited about, with they, that thought that we should be considering as a district. So that will be, um, talked about. And then safety, always an issue that we're gonna continue to work on. And then just looking at upgrades and enhancements with facilities based on what I said, that Fund 46 and such. So that's a lot, and that's just the district one. Um, and I know Liz and Sarah, well, gonna come down and share briefly a little bit about their scorecards as well. But any questions about where we're at from a district standpoint?
Are you wanting to develop a scorecard that isn't an annual one? That is maybe a longer look where something like keeping field trips at the forefront can live? Because, um, it seems like there could be some things that are, are long-term goals that aren't gonna be the focus every single year, but are something in the back of your mind in everything you do.
Right, I mean, and that would be something, when we get to the, you know, at the end of each year, you'll evaluate, all right, what did you achieve, what did, you know, where did you fall short? And then you create your, your next strategies or scorecards based on that. So if we still feel like, hey, this was a priority, we achieved it, but we really think it can, needs to continue, we put that in the scorecard for the following year. So, and we've thought about doing something different. I don't know how many scorecards you can have, right? Without getting, have some, having something getting lost in the shuffle. But I still think if this group feels like, hey, this needs to continue to be a priority, then we need to put it on the scorecard.
I have a second question for the district. One. I know you're still early on in the development of it, so in February, it'd be good to know, with all of these measures that you have, how many can we fall behind on in a year before we start considering we're not being successful achieving our strategic goals? Because I'm sure at any point, any one of them could fall behind, and that's not going to be a problem. But are you considering that?
Yeah, absolutely. So when we come in, like I, yeah, like I started off the conversation, this is, this is, this is the start to check in. So you, everyone knows that, hey, we're working towards what exactly the community wants us to do, and here's, here's our first check-in, but February will be more of a comprehensive approach as to what exactly is happening. And kind of where we're at too, because we'll have those initial, um, benchmarks from the fall. And then we'll be able to say, hey, here's where we're seeing some progress, or maybe where we're already feeling like we're falling short, and that we need to step some things up. So when we get to spring, we can come back and say, here's where we ended up. Okay, Sarah, would you like to come down and share? So as Sarah makes her way down, so then that's what happens, from that district one, then they cascade down into the buildings. And we've only asked our elementary and middle high school to just do that first pillar, not to do anything else with the other pillars.
So, uh, with the district report card, we took it to our school leadership team. And with our school leadership team, we took the district's pillars to really open up what we want as an elementary school. How do we want to succeed as an elementary school? We looked at, the team looked at previous data, and then also went back a few years too, so we could find some trends to really find out what is actually feasible for an achievement for students. Because we don't want to raise a pot of pie, we didn't want it to be super low. We want it to be a hard but achievable goal for our students. So pillars one, or vital measures one, two, and three all revolve around literacy, um, because we have Act 20 in there. Act 20 is really focused between. Act 20 is really focused between kindergarten and third grade, we have an Act 20 goal in there, and then we have our I-Ready that we have continued measuring on, and 4K, leading up along with our youngest learners, we wanted to include them as well. So, those measures are all around literacy goals. So, we're asking that 90% of our 4K students will meet their literacy growth as measured by the gold strategy assessment. And then, for kindergarten through second grade, so we did this because third grade is on the district goal for I-Ready. So, we did kindergarten through second grade for AIMS Web, and we're looking at individual student growth per 3%. So, where their baseline data is, we would like to see them at the end of the year, raise that data by 3%. So, instead of, in the past, we've looked at either growth as a whole or as a class, this time, we really wanna individualize students. And then, the same with students in I-Ready to increase their literacy score by 3% as well. And those are third grade through fifth grade in the I-Ready. Then we have kind of the same deal with math. So, again, 4K and 4K using the gold strategy assessment, and this time, we want 90% of students to achieve their math growth, and then along with 70% of students will achieve, achieve their annual typical growth on I-Ready for kindergarten through fifth grade students.
So, I'm sorry, Sarah, for the K through two and the three through five?
Yep.
Are you, you're saying we want every single student?
To show a 3%.
That's the condition that you're saying? We will know we're successful if every single student's had at least this?
Yes.
Okay.
So, if a student had a baseline proficiency of 72%, we want them at 75% at the end of the school year, and really focusing on individual students.
Okay, great.
And then, we have some social-emotional goals in there. So, this year, we're really focusing in on our second step curriculum, so that was part of the curriculum review that staff did last year. And that curriculum meeting in July, staff had the opportunity to, uh, kind of do a whole map of the school year and where they wanted it. So, we really wanna make sure that's implemented correctly, so we can meet the social-emotional needs of students. And then, the other one, by also incorporating the social-emotional learning, is by implementing morning meetings. And so, staff will be measured, staff will be measuring both of these, self-reporting. And then, we use our BEST screener, which is a way to look at the overall health of a student. And so, we also want to improve the overall health of our whole student population by 3%. This data will be, um, next. Thursday during our professional development day, staff will be given time to finish these assessments. And then, working with Kelly Santel, we're looking at increasing that universal instruction to really tailor the diverse needs of students. So, we are really incorporating that universal core instru, core instruction for all students.
Any other questions?
Can I ask?
Fire my screen.
For, so, the math is in four and five, vital measures four and five are related to math scores.
Mm-hmm.
Could you just go through why you're thinking about approaching it at the, it seems like the class level for math, but then the individual level for reading?
So, it's still the individual level for students, for, on the I-Ready, for, um, both of them are still individual students.
Okay.
So, vital measure five is that annual typical growth in I-Ready. So, the reason why we chose, and I say "we" as part of our school leadership team, and I'm actually gonna look at Elliot, who's kind of hiding back there with his hands, he was part of that team, happens to be here tonight. Um, the reason we went with that is because that is the data that we've always done, so we wanna keep that consistent.
Okay, yeah.
With the AIMS Web Plus, with our Act 20 data, that is new from last year, so that's a new set of data that we wanted to start kind of dabbling into to make sure we can target that 3% growth for each student.
I see a reason. Thank you.
Yeah.
Second one that I just wanted to talk about is, um, for me, I would have thought that the vital measures six through nine are more, almost beyond the belt, because as, outside of education, it seems, social-emotional doesn't seem to be educational excellence to me. Um, and so, if I were, would have been on the leader, uh, team for the strategic planning, um, I wouldn't have thought to put it in here, and I think it's just interesting that you have, um, if you could explain why?
Yeah. So, in order for a student to be successful in the classroom academically, they need to be in the correct social-emotional state. Um, and this really comes from our youngest learners, too. Their curriculum is more play-based, they're learning those fundamental social-emotional skills at a play-based level, and so, we want them to be successful regulating their emotions, regulating when they are maybe feeling overwhelmed, or, you know, the work is getting too hard for them, how can they best regulate that emotion? Also, too, part of morning meeting is students check in during the day. So, if they're checking in at a two, which means I'm not doing great, they're not gonna be successful learning at all. So, that's why we incorporate those social-emotional pieces into that academic success and educational excellency, because they need to be in a good, positive state of social-emotionalness to be successful academically.
And I'll just say that it was actually the strategic planning task force that put those together, because they felt what the, what we got out of the, the input and insight from the community was that emotional being was equally as important as academic success. So, we wanted to make sure that that fell into that pillar, so that those, and that's why that's in the same, actually, like, if you look at what, what states in there, emotional being is in there, and exactly what Sarah said. But that came out of the task force, and it's just the school that took that and moved that forward, so.
Pat yourself on the back.
Yeah. Any questions from the task force?
Any questions?
I just have, uh, a comment.
Yeah.
That I, uh, ha, having, having helped develop the pillars, uh, I am really impressed with what all the people have done by taking that pillar and making it come alive to a point where I'm excited about the, uh, March 6th. That'll, that'll, uh, and, and to actually have, uh, you're gonna do this, you're gonna, they, they're going to improve by 3%. I have no idea what you're talking about in some of those states, these assessments, whether they are, but you've adopted those as a district and have confidence in the data that you give them, so.
And I will say, once we created this, I actually went to the leadership team, and I said, all right, we have nine measures, that seems like a lot. And they came back to me, and they're like, but Sarah, we're actually already doing this and collecting data on all this, it's just folding us more in.
Good job, SLT. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Okay. I'll get to talk about middle school, high school. Um, and sometimes, when, when we look at middle school and high school, you have that six, twelve, um, that six, twelve mile, right? So, you have to be able to try to balance this within, and yet, still, when you have teachers sharing in all different areas, making sure everybody's voices are heard throughout that, because there are definite needs between sixth to eighth grade that are a little different than ninth through twelfth grade. Um, so, in this pillar, though, we really, really kind of tried to come together as an SLT team to say, hey, here's what we wanna focus on from the educational aspect of it. Now, we use this term, I wanna use this term loosely, kind of, not loosely, I guess that's not really it, um, to the way that I, we narrowed it into 70% provision for all students. I would love 100%. I would love 100% provision for all students. What we have, though, is right now, we've been sitting on an average for the last two years of about 61% for our students, 61% to 63%, depending on the grade level. All right? There are some grade levels, honestly, we did have one grade level that was at 68% last year. All right? And they'll be now rotating in, so it will be really interesting. So, what we did is said, hey, if we get to 70%, we have moved needles in a variety of different areas. Um, and for one area, yes, it may only be a 2% needle move, but it's still a 2% needle move, that's a huge difference for us. Beautiful thing about using the two data points that we're using for our students, whether it's in reading or whether it's in math, um, the ACT, pre-ACT, or the I-Ready, depending on what grade level you are in, is what we're gonna get a chance to do. And it really does, um, disseminate all of the information, so that we can have, like, see where a student really is in the proficiency window. You can be at the beginning of the proficiency window, and you can be at the end of the proficiency window, before you reach to the next piece. And so, we're really trying to get all of our kids into the middle and above in that window. So, that's kind of where we go with our two vital measures, so one's in math and one's in reading, um, so that they're both there. The one piece that we have is, so this year, our students, honestly, I just got their scores back today, um, we had some, our students already take the pre-ACT, and, um, yeah, it's gonna be exciting. Um, so, I, I am really, really excited, but we, there's areas of growth in it. But the thing that will happen is in the spring, our ninth graders will be, they're taking the pre-ACT, and then the test that they take in the spring isn't exactly the same exact test, but the measurements are, there's like four measurements in reading and four measurements in math that are the same. So, we're gonna focus in on those spots. So, that's kind of like a weird, like, just a, a little side note for our two spots for our measuring aspects for us. Questions about the testing and about that data portion, before I'll jump into our next pieces that we're looking at? Go for it.
So, for one and two, you're approaching it at the class level, we're trying to get 70% of students?
Yes, correct. Yeah, and much more. Now, the beautiful thing that we have here is our students, our, our teachers will also, in our PLC and the professional learning communities, they will break it apart student by student as well. For the big picture, right now, we're looking at as a whole class, um, which has been exciting. Honestly, it was really, our SLT group got a chance to pick apart data, um, and it was really fun to hear what they were pulling from, um, in the data and what jumped out to them. And we're talking about that, matter of fact, in our meeting this Sunday, so, really can be, so, great question. Any other questions on the, on that, those pieces, the testing aspect? Because I know that those are gathered through every Wednesday right now so far, so, we're getting our first, first round in, and then we'll get, get some more, and then we'll be able to make some adaptations and some adaptations and accommodations. So, the second part of our next thing is, does honestly go under that social-emotional learning as well, which is our BEST. And so, um, what's really cool about this test for between sixth through 12, not test, but more of like a survey, a screener, if you wanna call it a screener, um, is that you can take it individually, you can break apart the data, so you can find like fine-tuning pieces, but you can also take it apart whole school as well as class level. So, I didn't realize that until I was diving in a little bit more, that I could break it apart that much further, which can do amazing things, uh, when you think about what we have already going on in our building, but then we can do different groupings and figure out different needs and really dive in. What's interesting is our students will do this next week, and I know it's like right before break, so they might be really, really excited, but I think at the same point, it is, um, I think what I, what I'm looking forward to is really seeing the truth from those students. They're usually very, very truthful of what they are feeling and how they are feeling from the lens of learning, and as well as just them being in their bodies, which I think is really unique, but also really helpful as we do these screeners. So, we'll get that first portion of the data pull, and then another one in the spring, and see what we're doing. Middle school has a little bit more avenue for some of these different interventions. Again, I probably have to look a little bit more in our high school and see what else I can add, or what else we can do. But middle school, we do have the academic lab, which has been super successful. They don't only do, um, it's not just all-based academic, it's a three-day rotational pull, and so, sometimes they're working on SEL, sometimes they're working on, um, fine-tuning their collaboration skills, sometimes they're working on doing just that, just, um, different, like, destiny walks, destination walks is what they call them. And it's been, to get a chance to come in to watch our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders do it, it has been really great. Um, I think one of my favorites right now has been, they got a problem from the school end, and they had to work as a team to figure out how to kind of go about helping solve a problem, but then they also had to figure out in their team that they didn't, they didn't have, they weren't as collaborative as they wanted to be. Okay, then they had to work through that, too. Those are all life skills that they can use. Um, and I know I digress a little bit from the BEST screener, but within those groups of students, using some of that time to really bridge it to a real, we'll see. That's just, uh, a cool, we have gotten some parent fam, uh, families back, just saying thank you for doing this screener, uh, which was really cool, too. Um, because again, we're gonna take, you know, some time out of the classroom, some time out of the academic side to do this, but we think it's really well worth it, and will give us some really good feedback for our students, and help us as educators, as we're going forward. Hey, the other one that we, we're super excited about is obviously our college and community and life readiness skills, um, where we are trying to make sure that this is in there, in that academic lab, within every single month. And some of them, we, we decided, the first one, like this past October, beginning of October 1, we decided, because we didn't have any data yet on our students, how we were gonna run it, but now, they're, they're honestly going to be sharing with us how and what their needs are, and that's what we'll be using. By NoDav Schmidt, Aaron Stouffer, Julie Corner have been doing a fabulous job with Kelly to be able to pull this together in this session for our kids. So, this is every three weeks that they will have the three days to do this, so, just a neat little thing to film. And then, we are still going with our, making sure we're really trying to use a, we're doing that, use a universal design for learning as we are incorporating our different needs, as we're incorporating our lessons to make sure they're tailored to the diverse needs of our students and our learning, and keeping that focus. What was interesting, our stu, our teachers did, uh, a week ago in the PLC, uh, we had an article that was a really great article, it was in one of my principal magazines that we had, and I shared, I said, they're like, oh goodness, you're reading that again right now? And I'm like, I know, but there's really, really good things that we can pull from this. And we pulled this out, and this was one of the ones that, there was eight different strategies for this, on working with diverse needs and in your classroom. And what this, what the teachers had to do was they had to work together to come up with a way, how they would apply the strategy in their classrooms, and how and what it would look like. And it was great, because at that point, we had teachers from all different math, science, social studies, FIA, and music, they were all different, combined differently. What was interesting is when you start to talk about it, when they're just in their own departments, the differences of what they, what they were doing. But really cool for them to be able to do it together first, and then break out to their subject areas. I thought that was pretty neat to see some of that. And that's, again, our universal design for learning and just keeping that in the forefront. They're working for our kids, we know that not every kid learns the same exact way, we also know not every kid shows what they know the same exact way, and we think that's really important that they have that opportunity.
I don't really know how to ask this question, so I'm not tempted. Um, so, when you talk about universal design for all needs, this one specifically, obviously, measuring within the students with disabilities or those on IEPs, is there some point, though, that, that those teachers, knowing these different avenues and ways of, of teaching and learning, that could be utilized to the general population as well? Or, I mean, like, you know, I mean, it's, it's universal, so, it's applicable to everybody. So, I, I just think it's curious that, you know, students that may not fit into that category may benefit from a similar tactic for somebody.
And that's the beauty of it, is it's being done in the classroom with everybody, and inclusive teaching.
The measurement is just within that.
Yes, just, and it's done for them, students with diverse needs. Yeah, the measurement is just with them, but it's being done universally in that classroom, which has.
It'd be cool, you could measure it differently, but, yeah, for everybody.
Right. And knowing, and you never know, right? There's so many different variables that could be making an effect, and, um, but the fact that they know that it's out there is what will want for them. And I saw it straight up in the science classroom, um, just with how we were doing the lab and how they had to present the lab, um, and it was just really, um, it was really great, because they weren't talking about something super easy, they were talking about molecular courses, and they had to figure out how to design this to show somebody else and teach it in a different way. Um, and I thought that was really neat to watch us do that. Yeah, sorry, that was a lot of information. What questions do you have? Go for it.
I don't know if it's a question, it might be a concern, so, um, this might not be new information to the board, but it made me think about the academic lab when you listed it here. Um, and I guess my concern is, is the academic lab getting too loaded? Is it becoming really important in a way that might, like, point us to thinking the middle school process, the middle school curriculum needs a bigger review? Because I feel like in the last year or so, the SLT and you have come and talked about the academic lab going into the middle school, um, for these different areas that we're hoping to that we're hoping to boost education achievement for the middle schoolers. And as time has gone on, it just feels like there's more and more going in there, and that's just the sense I've gotten, so I'm wondering what your kind of response is.
That's a really good, that's a very good, I guess, read of this, is yeah, we are putting a lot into it. We are. And I think what we're trying to figure out is where and what should be the focus, the final focus point of that academic lab. So where we may not be doing, like, we're not, in sixth grade, we are not doing any more reading strategies in there. We are really focusing on that social emotional, we're focusing on collaborative pieces, we're focusing on like the soft skills, as we would call those, with the kids in our sixth grade. We took that reading portion out, and they have a reading class as well as a language arts class. So we're pushing that into those areas. So in the eighth grade, we haven't been able to do that quite as much. And so I do recognize maybe that is an opportunity that we have to further discuss and see if that is something we need to look at going forward. Right now, we're gonna try and keep a really good balance for this year, and then hopefully get some good data to tell us, hey, you know what? We focused way too much on this, we can put this here, and we can move this here, and we can still get the best for our kids. And that's the hope behind, once we get all those teachers back together, to kind of give us that, that information. But yeah, I do understand what you're saying, that we are continuously pushing in there. And it's a three-day rotation, so you don't see those kids for three days, right? You see them once, and then you don't see them again for another three days on that. I'm open to definitely conversations, for sure. And I think our staff would be too, so they would be my first line to go to, wouldn't they? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I know it's a new strategy, and I'm interested to see how it all works. And I'm glad that you're taking it. It's more of just informed by the last few years, we've seen this kind of, I don't want to say it's a dip, but slower pace for the middle school and maybe rebounding from COVID or other things on the report cards that we get. And I know that it's a new strategy, so I'm just interested to see how you all consider it going forward.
No, I appreciate you looking at it that way, because I think it could, it could work into something that could be even more, and we put these other, we put some of the reading and the math into these other spots. But, because we also want a spot where our kids can be middle school students and work through some of the middle school, some of those things that are different for our kids in grade six through eight, and get them prepared for that next spot in their journey and education, so they feel ready to rock and roll when they get to that school. Any questions? Okay, well, I'm gonna get out of here.
Alright, thanks, guys. Thank you, guys. I just want to say how refreshing it is to have such passionate educators working for us. I know everybody in this room can just keep talking, and I can sense the joy that this brings. So that's just refreshing, and I would hope that people that aren't content, they're gonna keep pushing the needle, and we're so appreciative of that. Any final questions?
Yeah.
I think this is maybe for us as board members, as they're all doing that hard work to push everything and move forward on the plan, is how we're going to assess overall success year over year to make sure that we don't stray too far from our original understanding of the strategic plan. And I think it'll be great to have that annual scorecard, but I'm interested to see if we want to talk about what questions do we want routinely answered when they come back to show the progress? Or what overarching ideas that are actionable for those pillars are we hoping to see each time they come back and review? Because I think this plan is better than the last one, because it is so great to me compared to the last five-year plan. Because the last five-year plan that we did have, kind of had that overarching theme that we could track year over year a little easier, so I'm wondering if we want to develop that or if we prefer to leave it in the hands of the admin, because they're really driving the car. So that was my thought.
I think it's just like the academic lab, where you're in your first year, and you kind of have a feeling of how it's gonna go, and then maybe by the end of it, you're gonna revisit and be like, oh, I like what we got this year, or maybe you don't love this so much, how can we do better next year? And I think definitely a workshop or, you know, continuing to collaborate on what it means and making sure we're always moving back to the purpose of our, by the task force. But I think it's continual, it gets ever evolving, I don't know if you can chat to your folks, but I think it's just a constant revisiting and keeping the conversation going.
Yeah, absolutely. And like I said, I think after this year, it'll be more telling at the end of this year to see kind of where we're at and how we might want to either tweak things, change things moving forward. But always, where the admin team is interested in how the board feels about, like, are there certain things, data points, are there certain strategies that you want us to have a focus on? As long as it's, because, right, we did that for a reason. We got the insights in the community for a reason. And so as long as we're continuing to focus in those pillars, I think it makes perfect sense to continue to operate as a team, so.
And I'm really excited to hear from the staff that are actually involved in some of this, because I think that's where our support lends itself, is to say, hey, we have these overarching goals, but is it sustainable? Is it realistic? What are you actually seeing in the classrooms? And so I think it's just a conversation piece, you know, connecting all the dots to make sure we're aligned, because if we're not aligned at the end of the day, we could have lots of ideas, but if it's not, you know, good in practice, then that's gonna fail, so.
Yeah.
I'm excited that they're coming, and I think it's just keep it as transparent as possible, which is how this started in the first place, and always up for ideas and conversation. Anyone else, Mike?
I would say before we go on, so thanks again to the strategic planning task force for all your hard work going into this. We're excited that every time we're together, we're like, we have a plan, we've got some things to move forward on, so we are so incredibly grateful.
Can I make the comment?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So just thinking, listening to all the questions and the comments and the presentations, and reading through this presentation, and thinking back to all the work we did creating that strategic plan, and then empowering the community to be part of it. One of the resonant things that the feedback that I got during that process and even since then has always been, okay, we did all this work, now what are they gonna do with it? Me and the administrative team and board. Seeing this data on this piece of paper that there is a framework built, to me, fulfills the part that I promised to the community as an individual member of that strategic planning force. And I'm happy and proud to see it on a piece of paper. And the comments said, we're just making, this is just an initial plan, right? It's the second step in this journey, and we've got some ideas, some goals with attainability, measures, et cetera. Doesn't mean it's written in concrete. We might learn after year shots, 3% maybe was a bit of a stretch, let's throttle that back 2% for a specific goal. Great, it's an evolving process. But overarching, I want to be nice, and I'm not good at that, but I'm very proud of all the work that all of you folks have done to carry this ball forward from those original planning sessions, so thank all of the folks here for that.
Right, with that, you're free to go.
I was thinking date night, maybe. I got my orders, we're staying right here.
Anything else on that while we're, all right, we'll move on. District business policy. Do I have a motion to approve volume 34, number two, technical correction? I'll take a moment, please.
So, second.
And so these are just technical changes that Neola has advised for the district. Small grammar changes or omissions, or that they don't require a second reading, so that's why you're seeing these technical corrections. Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And then I'll just take a motion to approve volume 34, number two, revise policies.
So, second.
Any questions?
I didn't, I didn't know this to you earlier, sorry, Michelle. I saw in there there was one about the like termination resignation, or not termination, supervisionation, but the promise of future employment over year to year. And were we clarifying that after conversations?
That, well
Was that coming straight from Neola?
That was straight from Neola.
Okay.
But we, however, and I think it's down here, I put what, so we worked with our attorney on looking at some of our co-curricular contracts and those assurances, so she changed the language in there, so there's no longer those assurances. So this falls in line with that, but we also had her working exactly on our
It was born out of our original policy, and then through speaking with Shana, and then connecting with Neola. This is the recommended direction.
Thanks for closing the room on that.
Yeah, should be great. Any other questions?
Our experience.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Onto district business donations. Do I have a motion to approve a donation from St. John and St. Paul Lutheran Church for $500 in memory of Sherry Herring to the spec ed department?
So, second.
Nice gesture. Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And then just a couple acknowledgements here. Vanguard Racing Team is still on their quest to win. So we're acknowledging a donation of $100 to the Vanguard Racing Team from Gary Demaschke, and as well as a $100 donation to the Vanguard Racing Team from the Oak House Pub in the Grove. Good job, guys.
They know how to get the journey.
They know how to get the circuit. They can go from Gary to the Oak House. 9.1, do I have a motion to approve the Start College Now and Early College Credit Program?
So, second.
Anything to add to this, just the annual?
Yeah, these are just the regular, I mean, look at the number, I know the number is very high. It's just because we have to put these classes in in case they can't get into the classes, which is what we ran into this fall. We do have more students that are opting to do this, especially once they've hit all the caps of our classes, which has been really great, and just, again, great conversation for our students. About 50% of our kids that are taking them go on campus, and about 50% this semester are staying here on campus to do it online. So it just depends, who are taking the same exact class, one on campus, one off campus. Now, the one that one is doing it off campus, online, is like, I should have just gone on campus, because it was You know, it's just funny when you have these conversations, but I really appreciate it. I know the students really appreciate it, and I think it's a wonderful program that we have. We also do have two students, we have EMR, so the emergency response, which is a huge thing, they get certification. So we have one student doing that right now, we will have, with this, we could have three CNAs next spring, which is another huge certification for our kids. Some really good things, so, thanks for being willing to support that.
And the number is 21,000, is that what you were saying?
Yes, yeah, but that's based on the high end of it.
Yeah, and for me, I'm like, that's effective for what we're offering the students. You know, I mean, that's 30% of an FTE for how many classes they're gonna get, so I think that's more than worth it.
Okay.
And I'm happy to support the program and shot it around the students, so.
Yes, awesome, yes, thank you. And they are opening up that next fall, they will open up the welding certification for our students. We have, we do have some that come through, but there's a few others that we can't offer here yet. So they'll have that, they will also have a construction one, and then there is one in an architecture piece as well. So, super cool, that'll start in September, so we'll make sure the kids know that before March 1st.
All right, and questions? Mary Beth?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Onto athletics and activities. Do I have a motion to approve the co-curricular middle school code handbook?
So, second.
And as you can see, attached is just some additions that were made. Travel, sure, can you see that? Okay, any other questions? Mary Beth, Mary Beth? Yes. Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Same addition to the high school handbook, so I'll take a motion to approve the co-curricular high school handbook as attached.
So, second.
Any questions? Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yep.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And do I have a motion to approve the coaches and advisors handbook?
So, second.
I know a lot of work went into this, thank you, Alex, for your efforts in that, and it'll be interesting to hear, maybe at the end of the year, kind of how these expectations were adopted and how the coaches kind of felt. These expectations in place. Any other comments or questions? Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. On to finance and budget. Do I have a motion to approve the addition of a 1.0 FTE spec ed aid?
So, second.
My only question is, and I know we've talked about this at like for a long time, about trying to get on the same page of understanding as far as expectations needs, how we can be supportive of the spec ed department with the growing needs and challenges. And so when you come to the realization that you need an additional aid, at what point are you like, we made, you need an additional spec ed teacher? Or at what point are the caseloads that, you know, because we don't know how many students that this, you get my drift?
I get it.
So I don't know if you have thoughts about that, that's where I'm landing right now.
And I will, I will tell you, because I highlighted in our, in the board report, it's, it has been a really, it's a huge challenge right now, where we're pulling from student services, we're pulling everybody we possibly can to kind of cover the needs of students. And the challenge with it is that it's so variable, because, you know, we have kids that move in, and we see them on paper, but once we see them in development, that helps us decide what is sustainable, what is not sustainable. I think that's the new incentive for our kids, at additional circumstances.
And I think then, you know, maybe think about it as proactive as you can be, and because I feel like as best we can avoid this reactionary fire, you know, the dumpster fire of like, we're out of control, we need it now.
Yes.
I would much rather be on a more conservative proactive page of like, trends are going here, you know, maybe we can get ahead of it, whether it's licensing, you know, however that is. Just, this is another conversation of like, we're here to support the spec ed department and our staff that are working tirelessly as the needs and challenges grow, and so team that up, that maybe that's a conversation that we can have.
Thank you.
But glad we're adding another aid.
Now we've got a bunch.
Great, all right, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, on to personnel. Do I have a motion to combine 12.1 to 12.5?
So.
My second. And we've got a couple hires in there, but sadly, the announcement of Emily's resignation, our elementary music teacher, onto a different pathway, and we certainly extend thanks and gratitude to everything that she's given to our district, sad to see her leave. Any other questions or comments? Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Future meeting dates, just another
What?
Oh, that was combined.
Oh, it was, okay, got it.
Um, just another invitation, your annual meeting. That's, that's really, it's so exciting. It's exciting, because the superstars of our business, the department here, Brett and Nick, will be forefront. But is it reason enough?
It should be.
And then we'll roll into our regular meetings. So annual meeting starts at 6:00 PM, our board meeting will begin at 6:30, and then board members, just to make note of our early start on Monday, November 10, for new staff meeting recap, we always like to do at the beginning of the year, and another policy committee meeting that was added on the 24th of November to go over some additional handbook conversations. You on that? Any questions? Okay, then I will take a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thanks, everyone.